Soccer called game before I came here.
Welcome everyone.
Recording in progress.
I now call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. And please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
With eight counselors present and three absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors Burnley, Mbah, and Said will be here shortly. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there counselors wishing to speak about community members? Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two brief ones tonight, one of which is for Regina Rodrick. She was 85 years old, passed about two weeks ago, very longtime Somerville resident and active parishioner at St. Joseph's. You know, there's a lot of Rodricks in Somerville, so I ask that we keep her entire very large extended family. If I had to list off everybody she was survived by, it might take us the rest of the night. Also would like to ask everybody to keep in their thoughts the Fahey family and Francis Xavier Fahey. I don't know if any of y'all knew Franny, but Franny was born in Somerville. He was literally born in that little brown house down by where the Union Square T-stop is. Y'all might have known him better as the guy with the radiator shop. And he was a character. I could tell, again, stories that would last for a long time about him as well, but unfortunately, he has passed on and will not be part of Union Square's colorful cast of characters, but hopefully the stories will go on. So with that, I ask that we keep the Rodrick family and the Fahey family in our thoughts tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remember Patricia Almeida of Hancock Street, which is a street adjacent to where I grew up on Spencer Ave. Patricia was known as the mayor of Hancock Street because of her great involvement in the community. Her kids, Derek and Jess, were my age, grew up together. They are Somerville cousins to the Sullivans on Spencer Ave, which means they have no blood relation at all, but they're close enough to be considered family. And Brienne Sullivan is my Somerville sister, so I'm thinking about all of them right now. Great contributor to the community, loved being from Somerville, born and raised. And I'm thinking of her entire family tonight and hoping that they're doing well.
Counselor Davis would like to co-sponsor that as well. Counselor Said is here. Everyone who is able in the chambers, if you'd please rise for a moment of silence for the aforementioned individuals. Please be seated. Colleagues, we, after we take up the public hearing, we're going to have a citation. That's 10-1. We have a number of invited speakers here. We're going to take up 6E, that's the Public Health and Public Safety Report. Counselor McGlaughlin has a speaker. And then we're going to take up 10-2 and 10-3, which are related to Gilman Square, and then 10-4 related to the Edgerly. And then the administration has asked us to take up three finance items, 7-1, 7-2, and 7-5 for consideration tonight, and we have staff here to speak to those, so we'll take those up early. And with that.
The next item is item 1.3, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, those are approved.
And then we'll also take out of order item 10.1, which is a citation by Counselor Strezzo commending Jake Colbert on the auspicious occasion of his retirement after over 36 years of distinguished service to the fire department.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. So this is a surprise citation that no one's supposed to know about except us in this room and, you know, the public at large as we are recording this meeting. But we are honoring Lieutenant Jake Colbert for all of his dedicated service. And I'm going to read this because whomever eventually does learn about this citation should know his work and his presence and dedication to Somerville. So Lieutenant Colbert had a 36-year career with the Somerville Fire Department. He serves as a third district vice president to the International Association of Firefighters. In this role, he serves as the executive board of the IAFF and represents 23,000 firefighters and locals across New England. He's a graduate of Somerville Public Schools and Malden Catholic High School, earned his bachelor's degree in business administration from UMass Amherst and an associate degree in fire science from Bunker Hill Community College. He was one of two IAFF members to attend the Harvard University Trade Union Program in 2012 and served as president of Somerville Local '76 for 12 years. Served 14 years elected to the professional firefighters of Massachusetts Executive Board, serving as legislative agent, District 6 Vice President, Secretary Treasurer, and President. He's an elected vice president of the Mass AFL-CIO and is the chairman and president of the Mass Gallon Firefighters Memorial, where in his leadership for firefighters' health, safety, and wellbeing of their families has been the mission and cornerstone of his 36 years of Somerville. He's of his service and he's a lifelong resident of Somerville, so would love to celebrate him.
You're here. Thank you, Counselor Strezzo. That item is approved.
Item 3.1 is a small wireless facility by Crown Castle Fiber LLC for facilities on a new pole at 50 Brassau Ave.
Declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Please use the raise hand function if you're here virtually.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. I am here as a representative of Crown Castle and the supervisor of the network permitting and utility side. We are going to be upgrading the equipment that is currently located on the utility pole on Brassau Ave. It will also be replaced by National Grid to allow for proper utility standards and spacing on that pole.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. I am actually the ward counselor for this, and I do have a couple of questions. So when the public notice went out for this item, it said "new pole at 50 Brassau," which caused quite a bit of alarm from the neighbors because the last thing we need is two utility poles when there are plenty on that street. So I want to first confirm, this is not really a new pole, this is a replacement of an existing pole, that's correct?
That is absolutely correct.
All right. And during that replacement, can you confirm that there will not be a double pole?
That is also absolutely correct. We will work with all the third-party attachers as well as National Grid and Verizon to make sure that pole is removed as soon as the transfers are done.
Thank you. And I've also heard from a number of neighbors on Brassau that the current equipment there has an extremely loud fan that they have measured at something like 50 to 55 decibels running at all times. Obviously been very frustrating. The new equipment looks like it's larger. Can you tell me, is it supposed to be running that loud? Will this new equipment be running at a volume like that?
It should not be. The equipment currently on the pole is almost 20 years old, so it is quite old. It has aged out. I don't know, Andrea Torres or Chris Purcell, they have my phone number. If you find or if any of the residents do find that in any other situations currently or after these upgrades have completed, please reach out to me. We can have a technician come. A lot of times leaves can get stuck in them. Sometimes if it's after winter, snow, or ice, or that sort of things, and they just may need to be kind of cleaned out a little bit, but it should not be significantly loud at all.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions.
Of course.
Seeing nothing further from the council, this item is approved.
Thank you.
The next item that will be taken out of order is item 6E.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Which, want to read it first?
Oh, please, yes.
Which is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting as a committee of the whole on September 23rd, 2024.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on that day. All were present except for the president, who had to be at a fall committee meeting. Surely talked about the subject of the library at that meeting, which is what this entire meeting was dedicated to. I'll be brief because almost everyone was able to attend. We talked about the timing of this, when the library is going to reopen, the role of police versus private security in addressing incidences, the need for youth space in the community. And there is not a part of this committee report but a recent announcement that a private security firm has been hired to address security issues at the library. One item that we took up that we did not really discuss is an item that I placed in with Counsel Strezzo, addressing the Teen Empowerment Center on Broadway, 165 Broadway in East Somerville, which has been used for decades now to work with at-risk youth and people with trained professionals, people who know how to deal with at-risk youth, and also training young people to be mentors to other youth and to work with them there. And it's a great program, but it's been limited in its ability because the building is not ADA compliant. It's on the second floor, and I believe, as we will discuss in a moment, that some basic maintenance to this building could open up a teen rec center that is fully supervised and already funded by the City of Somerville. And I think that would be a positive. It's something that I talked about probably a decade ago, and it worked for about five minutes, and then for whatever reason it fell apart, and I'm hoping that we can look into this. So I submit the committee report to be approved, and I would like to sponsor Stan Pollak, who is the director of the Somerville Site for Teen Empowerment, and he can address the program as well as the needs that we might be able to help him with.
Mr. Pollak, please. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening. I am actually the acting director of the site. Our former director moved on to another job, that was Danny McGlaughlin, great guy, did a great job. I've been involved in Somerville for something like 50 years or so. I worked in 1974, I started in 1974. At that time, Somerville was a very different city. There were real big problems with youth. And just for an example, there was a Friendly's on the corner of, well, on one of the corners of Highland Avenue, and it shut down, not because it didn't have business, it had a lot of business, but it couldn't deal with the young people, so they shut and they left. We worked really hard as a, you know, citywide effort of youth workers, social workers, and we did all kinds of different work and were very successful in bringing down the rates of car theft by 50% and robbery, larceny, and assault by 25% over a five-year period. And it was very successful. Then in 2004, I worked with the former mayor to deal with the problem of Oxycontin and teen suicide that took place. And now here we are in 2024. And I guess I tell you all these things because really there's these trends that happen with young people, and it's very important that the library be open and that there be rec centers and so forth. But it's really important to work on the value systems and belief systems that young people are operating on and what they're saying to each other when adults are not around. And that's what we are doing and have been doing, and it can be very successful. On the other hand, I'm really concerned with the kinds of behavior patterns that have emerged over the last number of months here. So it's really important to take this very seriously and to act on it at a time when it's not out of control. And one of the linchpins of that is having space, and that's a big problem, obviously with the Edgerly closing the teen center. There's a connection between these things. And the fire station, the community center is just a great resource. It's really, it's in the right place. There's like probably 3,500 square feet of space, and we can't use it to bring in a large numbers of young people who we know could really benefit from involvement in our programs. And we're really anxious to open that space and to share that space with the recreation department and mental health professionals to provide a broad range of services to a large number of young people. So I really would urge you to do everything you can. I don't think it has to be a very expensive investment, really, to do this. I mean, we have a set of steps, and I know the YMCA has a chair kind of thing that they had installed there, and that meets the ADA requirement. So I would urge you all to do what you can to have that done and to have it done in not a real long time so we can get a handle on the kinds of problems that are emerging. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. If I may, through you, can we please, can I get a response from the administration and the mayor's office to hear their thoughts on this and what the holdup is on any of this not happening and what we can do to expedite the process?
Welcome, Director.
Through the President, thank you, Counsel Strezzo, for that question. I do know that our RSG ADA coordinator in the RSG department is working on an ADA task force, so I will have to consult with the relevant staff and come back to this council with an update. And it would be, this request would be part of that review along with any CIP-related conversations that our finance department is having.
Mr. President, through you to the administration. Thank you for that. I do appreciate it. With the current conversation of teen spaces reignited after the past month in the library closing, has the teen empowerment space been considered by the administration and the immediacy of the situation to create these spaces and also the availability, quite frankly, that it's totally possible within our reach? Has that been considered by the administration?
Through the President, thank you for that question. I will have to talk to our ADA coordinator and our finance team on that. I'll have to update you shortly. I do want to share, as we shared during the Public Health and Public Safety meeting, that our Parks and Rec Department is working on expanding their current programming. Director Yurkis, who was at the meeting, shared additional programming that they're planning to roll out shortly at Founder's, so just wanted to highlight that as well. But on your specific question, I'll have to check in with staff and get back to the council.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. Just a real quick follow-up on Counsel Strezzo's questioning. So through you to Director Singh, so you mentioned the task force and you mentioned the CIP. So am I to understand that, like, so we're going to have to wait for the task force to release a report in which time, at which they'll prioritize the different things that need to be done and, you know, weigh against the money that we have, so there'll be like a queue? Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the President, thank you for that question. Counselor, I'll have to ask our ADA coordinator, and I don't want to misspeak and not provide the accurate information, so I'll have to come back to the council.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. President, it just seems like, you know, this should be considered like right away, not wait for a task force to come back with, I'm not really sure what, I guess like a priority list, again, based on the monies and such, but thank you.
I see a number of folks want to speak. If we're going to have a discussion about this, we should have it in committee. Counselor McGlaughlin and then Counselor Said.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I was going to suggest that we sever the item and put it back in committee, just because, and I want to be clear, I did not expect an answer tonight because I understand it's more complicated than that. But I hear task force, and that makes me nervous, and I hear talking about the Rec Department, which is a great program but very different from what Teen Empowerment does. Teen Empowerment is about teaching kids how to become adults and how to work with other youth, and it's also just legally required for us to comply with ADA standards. So I would prefer to leave this one in committee, and maybe we can take it up when the city is prepared to give an answer.
Great. Counselor Said.
Through you, Mr. President. Happy to have this conversation in committee. I was just going to add one thing to what the administration just shared. The director of Park and Recs explicitly said at the last Public Health and Public Safety meeting that space is an issue. That's why expanding the youth program offerings is right now very challenging. So we go back to the space issue. Thank you.
All right, so Counselor McGlaughlin moves to sever item 241326. That item, do we need a roll call to sever it?
No.
That item is severed, and I'll refer that back to Public Health and Public Safety. And seeing no further discussion, the committee report is approved. And if I didn't mention it, Counselor Mbah showed up several minutes ago. Counselor Burnley's here as well.
So the next two items that will be taken out of order are items 10.2 and 10.3. Item 10.2 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the executive director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development review the Gilman Square urban study and update this council before the end of fiscal year 2025 about the feasibility of pursuing that model. And item 10.3 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the executive director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development begin the process of engaging with the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council on their long-term plans to develop Gilman Square and update this council before the end of fiscal year 2025 on how the administration plans to produce community-driven development.
Counselor Klingon would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley.
And first off, thank you for recognizing me, and sorry for being late, was coming from Boston and the traffic out there. You know, when it rains, the people in this great community of ours get a little less great. Having said that, typically, people in our community are wonderful, and I think some of the best ideas that this council has brought forward have been from our community, have been from our neighbors, have been from people who are dedicated to making sure Somerville can be all that it can be. And I had the opportunity just a few weeks ago to go to the Gilman Square Arts and Culture Festival and see just how much knowledge and beautiful vibrancy exists within one of our lesser-known and lesser-developed squares, including plans to really develop the area and to build a bridge from Gilman Square over to the T Station to make sure that we can have accessibility, which currently the T Station frankly does not, the Gilman Square stop. You know, if you were in a wheelchair and you were trying to go up School Street, good luck to you. There are ways around that, but our community has experts in it who have actually dedicated the time and energy and potentially money to develop design models for how we can actually make that space into something that meets community goals, that increases green space, that enhances accessibility, and ensures that Gilman isn't just a part of Somerville that people go through to get from one side to the other, but is a place where people can laugh and love and spend their time. And I just wanted to highlight that generally, as well as the point that now that we have a neighborhood council in this community, in this neighborhood, we should really be relying on it for the future of this space. Currently, we have a site, the Home and Site, which is, at the moment, really not doing anything. Previously, there was Gilman Park there, but that's largely not activated for the foreseeable future, at least as far as the community is concerned. And yet, this is a space that the folks in Gilman have been talking about for a number of years, have been excited to build upon for a number of years, and have created plans for not only that site but the larger community. And I think it's really important that as we move forward and as Somerville continues to grow and develop, that we have community-led development. And so in the interest of that, I'd love to hear from two of our community members about their efforts over many years since before the pandemic to actually build up this neighborhood. And specifically, I'd like to sponsor Matt Carlini and Stani Ai, I'm not going to say the last name, but you definitely can, who are here and they have a model for us all to look at so we can see what I was just talking about. Thank you.
For those watching at home, a gigantic model of Gilman Square is being marched to the front of the room.
And through the chair, I'd like to also just acknowledge that these items were directed towards a particular director, and he is in the room, and I saw him have some of those conversations that I was asking for, it seems like, earlier with these two good folks. So excited for these conversations to begin and develop.
Yes, I don't think this is the first time the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council has interacted with OSPCD. Welcome, Stani.
So my name is Stani Jordanova, and I am a member and a former board member of the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council, and we are a community of neighbors with the goal of creating a vibrant, sustainable, and equitable neighborhood just down the hill from here. And I'd like to thank Counselor Willie Burnley for inviting us here and Counselors Klingon and Ewan Campen for their tireless, continuous support for our neighborhood. So a little bit of history, the neighborhood plan for Gilman Square was established and were approved in 2014. 2017 is when our group formed as the Gilman Square Neighborhood Association, and we worked quite a bit to produce sort of community engagement and learn really what the community was interested in having in our neighborhood, and this was through a series of meetings, both with the city's participation. We signed a sort of an agreement with the city to work together. And then in 2019, a few proposals came from this community process, one of which you see here in the model, another one- see here in the model, another one which is on boards that we have that was produced by the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council. This was produced by Peter Rosen Partners, which is an architecture and urban design firm, which I'm a part of, and we just sometimes do these things to benefit neighborhoods. And what came out of all of this, and including also RISD students studied our neighborhood, there's a bunch of plans that have come along, and all of them have four major ideas. They embody four components, which are, some of which Willie mentioned, Counselor Burnley, which is the accessibility to this T Station. Currently, there isn't an accessible path. The centralized green and civic space so that our neighborhood, people in the neighborhood can go to an active place, activity on the streets, retail space, and also affordable housing. And so by developing our square, we can gain all of these things. And there have been numerous plans that may, you know, show how that's possible. And so our, we have had trouble getting to, for the city to begin working on this. The Holman Site and the Triangle Park are both owned by the city. And we have had, we were on a pretty good process with the city, and then COVID hit, and it sort of stopped everything. And then there was a mayoral change and some staff changes. And then the Civic Advisory Committee was formed, which is to support urban renewal. And a bunch of these things have delayed and delayed and delayed. And what we're asking here is for the city to remove some of these roadblocks, and Matt can speak a little more about that. Thank you.
Yeah. So, hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. And Stani, so...
Can you just say your name for the record?
My name is Matthew Carlini.
Thank you.
So, as Stani said, there was a neighborhood plan that was adopted in 2014, about 10 years ago. There were planning processes happening with the city up until about 2021, including like a massing study for the lot. The RISD students did two years of, like, capstone projects in which, like, 40 designs were done for this site. And the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council, as a collective, has been working towards, like, consensus. And we have, like, a lot of these concepts are the same. And as Stani said, we want active floor plates, we want an accessible place to the T, we want affordable housing, and we really want a square back. And those themes have been rock solid for about 10 years now. So what we're hoping is that enough disposition has happened on the Holman Site over the last 10 years that we could ask City Council support for removing the Holman Site from this city disposition study, because this has been continuously studied for 10 years. The second request that we have is for the City Council to support the CAC in writing a letter to the SRA supporting starting the urban renewal process for the mobile station, because that is an item that could delay this, like, another 10 years. And we really don't, we see that as another roadblock that we'd really just like to be moving forward with. We know the mobile owner wants to develop. That's something that might be able to happen through this process similar to 299. So there are different routes that can happen. But essentially, what we wanted to do is, I don't know if you guys wanted to, we're passing around some images, but if you guys wanted to see the model, and Stani can talk about the Peter Rosen Partners design, which has an accessible way to the train, and it has kind of like this nice, this is what our zoning allows in the neighborhood.
Counselor Burnley.
Through the chair, I'll just note that the agenda items themselves have the full documents for both of these plans attached. So if you want to read the architectural design plan, that is the design before us, it is attached to the item, as well as the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council's broader plan for all of Gilman Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have additional stuff you wanted to say?
I know this is later in the agenda, but I would like to say that the GSNC supports everything that can happen for the Edgerly School. I think that community has been through a lot, and everything that the council can do to support them would be really appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. We're not going to have time to look at the model in detail tonight, but I think both of these items should be referred to committee. I would recommend they go to Housing and Community Development. We, as you mentioned, have been having this conversation for a long time, a lot longer than any of us have wanted. I want to say just briefly about the neighborhood formerly association, now council. This is a group of folks, not only do you all put on this incredible festival, but they have twice now successfully petitioned the City Council for upzoning, specifically to move us forward in implementing the future of Gilman, as well as officially forming a neighborhood council. They actually were the inspiration for us updating the neighborhood council ordinance, which had been written as kind of what we called at the time a stub ordinance, just to solve a specific problem in Union Square. These are the folks who inspired us to take it to the next level and make it citywide. We are incredibly thankful for the work you do. I want to learn more about whether the City Council has the power to remove a parcel from a disposition study. That's not something that I'm aware of, but I would certainly like to know more. And other specific, I always appreciate specificity in the asks coming from your group. So thank you. And I would, after we hear from our colleagues, we'll refer these to Housing and Community Development. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, thank you for coming up here. It's nice to see the model again. I want to thank my colleague at large for getting into the fight for Gilman Square. We need all the allies we can get. You know, I've been down in the trenches down there, fighting for these folks for quite some time now. And as was noted, you know, a lot of it, there was administration change, staff changes, COVID, these things. But a lot of it has to do, too, with an urban renewal plan, because any of plans include the mobile station and, you know, whether or not the owner of the gas station sells it to a developer that's willing to make a project that could come together into one site with the Holman Site to make something that is substantial and has the money behind it to be able to put in a walkway to the train. In order to do that, we need to ensure that the person who buys it is willing, is not going to just keep it as a gas station. So right now, the CAC, the Civic Advisory Committee, is, as was noted, drafting a letter to the SRA urging them to move on an urban renewal plan for the area. And maybe we don't have to take the mobile, maybe it just sparks the activity that we need. But I think it's also going to be important for the administration to recognize what these folks want down there and, you know, make it a reality, because, you know, since I've been on the council, when, you know, when former Mayor Creditone first mentioned the Holman Site, he, you know, had an idea for what he thought should go there. And then we've heard things, everything from the YMCA possibly going there to, you know, all different kinds of ideas. And I think, my personal opinion is, I think that, you know, a lot of those things would be great, but I think it might be a wasted opportunity for something larger where we can actually form a square that is, you know, developed, you know, smart development, community-led development, so that we can really enrich the lives of folks down in that area, as well as, you know, just creating that continuous path to civic, the civic center, which is City Hall, the 1895 building will eventually have city offices, right on a Green Line stop. It just totally makes sense. So I'm in this fight for the long haul. I fully support the Gilman Square Neighborhood Council and their plight, and I look forward to continuing this work with you all. So thank you for coming up here, and, you know, let's, hopefully, we can get where we need to be.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Mr. President, very impressive presentation. If anyone's interested in taking a pay cut, the City Council is trying to hire a planning position so that we could show some more initiative with zoning, as you have demonstrated here. I want, or if you know anybody who's entry-level looking to get involved, we'd love to have someone help us. I want to quote you, Mr. President, from the last Land Use Committee meeting we had about the recent upzoning of the Pearl Street property, where you pointed out that there is a propensity sometimes for neighborhood councils to be more opposed to growth and development, as opposed to embracing it. So I'm very happy that this neighborhood council is embracing the growth and embracing the need for housing by transit. And I do understand what we want, I'd like to see it citywide. So if you all want to expand citywide with us, that would be excellent. And I do know there are a number of neighborhood plans, there are a number of zoning proposals out there. I know that, there's a list of priorities. But this is one that the neighborhood is behind. And other neighborhoods that we want to do things in, we're going to meet a lot more resistance. So why not go to the path of least resistance with a Green Line station, with public space, and make something happen there? So I just want to echo my words of support for a former community of mine that I lost through redistricting, but thank the good councilors for representing it.
Thank you all. Thank you guys so much for being here. I'd also like to cosponsor this item, I failed to say that. And these items are referred to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
President.
That's officially property of the City Council now. No, just kidding.
Mr. President, can we take a five-minute recess, just so colleagues can take a look at the...
Very well. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
Hey, good seeing you.
Hey, good seeing you.
Submit a written report of outstanding 3-1-1 requests submitted for the Edgerly School Building and provide an update to this council with a plan to ensure that staff and students have safe and appropriate facilities.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I'll be brief with this one. I was hoping to have some speakers to sponsor from the Somerville Educators Union. But fortunately and unfortunately, it's back-to-school night for this school in particular. So a lot of those folks are busy right now. But many of my colleagues might be aware that the folks at the Edgerly have had a real time of it this year. There have been windows that have been broken all year in the building where students have had classes. There have been elevators that have gone inoperable several times and have forced teachers to have to leave through their windows with the help of firefighters. There have just been conditions that are, all in all, unacceptable for staff, for students, and for the Winter Hill community, which has already had to go through far too much. So I just want to try as much as we can as a council to put a pin in this and get a full list of the 3-1-1 requests that primarily staff have put forward for their buildings or for their rooms. Because as was the case at the Winter Hill School, we have been told for a long time what the issues were. Staff were not quiet about the concerns that they had about their facilities. They let the city know and were met with silence or neglect oftentimes. And I would just really hate for us to repeat those mistakes at a time where students are already more isolated and separated from their classmates than they have been in probably living mismemory. So I would love for this to go to committee so that we can go through this list, figure out with ISD and with other appropriate staff what the plan is, so actually make sure that this building, as long as we're using it for the purpose of a school, is actually appropriate and safe for all those residing in it. And so that we can actually give this community a little more relief for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
I saw cosponsors Klingon, Mbah, McGlaughlin, Wilson, Councilor Strezzo. Councilor Klingon wanted to speak with the Chair of the School Building Committee, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comments, and I'll also be happy to co-sign. My comment is just a procedural question through you to the good councillor at large. Happy to take this one in the, if the School Building Committee, which I assume is where it would go, "School Building Facility," I don't know. I can never get the acronyms right. We do have a very full agenda in that committee, and it's really hard to schedule the meetings because of the school committee's calendar. And that said, I'm happy to take this. I think this is an absolutely appropriate item for that committee, unlike some of the other items that we've seen recently, if anyone was paying attention last night. My suggestion might be, though, or my request, however you want to take it through to the President, is perhaps to clarify that a request for this in writing, well ahead of any scheduled meeting. That way, we can maybe take a little less committee time, and I can get through a little more of the other agenda items, because I don't want to, you know. I think at best, we're getting two more meetings this calendar year of that committee, at best. It's just that's how complicated it is with the calendar. So anything we can do to handle much of it in writing beforehand, and then we can do follow-ups and stuff in committee, if you're open to that, through the President, that would be my request.
Councilor Burnley.
Through the chair, if my colleague has a friendly amendment that he can just clarify for the clerk, I'm happy to accept it. Or if it's not necessary, happy to accept it and just put that in written form. Okay.
Great.
Couple folks want to speak as well. I think the whole council wants to cosponsor this. Councilor Klingon, then McGlaughlin, then Said.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. You know, I find this frustrating in that I actually don't hear as much... Similarly to the Winter Hill, I believe a lot of parents are still reaching out to school committee and not... Now, by the way, this building isn't in my ward, but I do consider these kids my kids, because this is Winter, you know, by proxy. I am overseeing, you know, these kids while they're in Ward 1. So I personally, and just like I did when they were at the Winter Hill, I've asked the principal to, anytime anybody, if she puts in a 3-1-1, I've asked actually 3-1-1, I asked if there was a special way that you could flag 3-1-1s that are put in by staff. So I've been down this road before, but I also find myself, again, frustrated that if, when these issues arise, if, you know, we can get them addressed if we know about them. And I did know about the elevator thing. I was literally like texting with the DPW to make sure that the elevator company had to come in on a Sunday and all this stuff. But I just, you know, I find it hard to address these issues if I'm not aware of them. And so, like I said, I was aware of the elevator thing. So if, you know, if these things are happening, I would encourage the SEU members or parents to, you know, email the ward councillor and CC me on it. And, you know, because we confer on this all the time about the Edgerly building and what, you know, when things arise. And like I said, I didn't, it sounds like there's some really bad issues, and I'm really not happy to hear that. It's just, I can't do anything unless I'm actually aware of them. So thank you for bringing this to everyone's attention. And, you know, I'll be looking into all these issues, whatever specific issues are happening right now. I will be working with the ward councillor to make sure they're addressed ASAP. So, you know, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, this is my ward, and it is our kids, Councilor Klingon. But I'll say, I think this goes well with, I've placed many orders over the past several years around the Edgerly School. And it's a problem that persists. It's a school that is honestly surprised, not that different than the Winter Hill School as far as structure. I'll say, well, first, let me say, I have a Public Health and Safety meeting scheduled. It's my ward as well. I'd be happy to take this up. I think we've been moving at a brisk pace in that committee, so I think we can get this done within a few weeks. I've also requested a meeting with the superintendent directly, not just about the inside of the building, but the outside of the building, which is causing a lot of problems in the community. So I'm happy to invite any councilors who care to join on that. And yes, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I take that up and try to get it done as quick as possible.
Very good. Councilor Said.
First, I would like to cosponsor and also thank Councilor Burnley for this order. And one thing I wanted to add, actually, through you, Chair, Mr. President, to the administration, is to please share these written documents with both the school committee and the city council, and do that ahead of time so we can go over those documents before the meeting.
Councilor Mbah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add, you know, it would be nice also to, first of all, thank you for, you know, to the good councillor for bringing this forward. It would be nice to know also the response time, not just the outstanding request, you know, because I've also had a lot of frustration from, you know, like the parents about they don't know, like, how long they should be expecting, you know, like, a response after calling 3-1-1. So that should be, you know, I don't know if we should, if I should amend that, or like, just so that we should have a proper response to this policy order.
I think that's on the record. Yeah. Colleagues, I would also just say, you know, as my colleagues have mentioned, this is something that I think the school committee hears about a lot. And as the councillor serves on the school committee this year, at our meeting a week ago Monday, this room was full of people here to talk on that day about the elevator. I think two things are true. One, the city staff that turned the Edgerly into a functional school did unbelievably heroic work in an incredibly short amount of time and deserve an enormous amount of praise and respect. And I think, I hope that they feel that. And also, the problems with that building are really stark, and the trust between, I think, a lot of the parent community there and the staff and the administration is at a really difficult point. On that, that entire meeting was about an elevator that had been broken for multiple days. After the extensive public comment on that issue, after that, we learned from the Director, Raj, that that issue had been identified as the result of faulty work by Eversource in an electrical box over the summer. It was not the result of the city dropping the ball. And in fact, the city was working overtime to get Eversource employees driving back from New Hampshire on weekend evenings to get that fixed. And these are really tough problems, right? And communicating that on top of actually fixing them is a really serious issue. So I think this is something that it is very important for all of us to be aware of so that we can stay on top of these issues. And it's also important, I think, to just kind of build up the transparency and the trust back, given this is a really, really tough situation that this school community is in. They've been through a lot. They're going to continue going through a lot with this building, and obviously, there is a lot of work to do to get that building up to snuff. Councilor Klingon.
Mr. President, I just want to note that later on in the agenda, I have an order in relating to elevators citywide, but it was sparked from this particular incident. And just checking out, you know, what the contracts look like with the elevator maintenance and so on, making sure that we're actually maintaining them properly. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to refer this to Public Health and Public Safety. Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes, real quick, Mr. President, point well taken on the elevator. Still plenty of things to talk about with that building, and there are items outside of the building itself that I think would be more of a city council thing than a school committee thing.
Absolutely. Councilor Burnley.
Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues' comments on this. I do want to just note how extensive these issues are. The elevator was a recurring one that is, I think, really crucial, because both it is a matter of federal law and also we've had staff members specifically implicated by that lack of elevator, which has caused an incredible amount of stress for both staff and students. But there are other issues. I just wanted to highlight that. And they are being worked on. I want to acknowledge that, too. I got a message from a parent today that said that after over a year, one of the windows was finally fixed on Friday. That was in a classroom that had been operated out of, that students were in, that the teacher was in, but that just had like a broken window until very recently. And, you know, if that hadn't been fixed before winter came, I wouldn't want to send my child, which who doesn't exist, to a classroom like that. So I just want to make sure that we're finding those spaces where the work still needs to be done, and that we're just pushing as hard as we can to do it, while understanding, to the President's point, a lot of these things are easier said than done. There are complications. By no means my intention to say that it's all staff's fault or the city's fault. And at the end of the day, we can't have students and staff be put in situations that are unsafe. Thank you.
Councilor Klingon.
I'm sorry, but I just, I want to say, had I, so that's exactly the example, the window situation. I knew nothing of the window. I'm like a dog on a bone. Had I known about the window, I wouldn't have stopped until it was fixed. So these are the things that I need to know about in order to be able to get them addressed. Thank you.
That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
The next item that we'll take out of order is item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting approval of an open space access easement at 5 Middlesex Avenue and Harold Cohen Way.
Is there staff here to speak to this item? Director Gallagani, welcome.
Thank you, councilors. This is a relatively straightforward document and ask. And what's happening here is that we will, the city will be getting an easement for this temporary open space. It's about 37,000 square feet. The developer, the current property owner, agrees to maintain this temporary open space. Temporary? Why is it temporary? This is part of a multi-phase development project at Assembly Innovation Park. At some point in the future, the old building where CHA was located will come down, and that'll be part of a subsequent phase of the project. When that happens, there'll be a permanent open space, expanded open space that takes place. This just covers the temporary piece. Logical question is, why are we looking for immediate approval? Because time is of the essence. It feels like fall. The development team is close to finishing this open space. We'd like to see them open that. To do so, we need this agreement signed, and this is one of the critical steps for them in order to get their certificate of occupancy, to get everything ready and approved. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Director, Councilor Scott.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So this is functionally a POPS, privately-owned public space, correct?
Through the chair, correct.
All right. And not for nothing, that permanent space later, is that going to be an actual city park, or is that going to be POPS as well?
Through the chair, I don't have an answer to that. I can find out for you for sure.
Okay. Well, I just have to ask, in the terms of this agreement, it says that it's only available to the public from dawn to dusk. How is that, how is that square with our other law that pertains to public parks here in Somerville, which is, I believe, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Through the President. That is consistent with some of these other parks that we're putting online, so that's...
Mr. President, this is the law regarding parks and playgrounds? So do I understand, then, that all of the privately-owned public spaces are not available to the public as long as the public parks are?
I don't have an answer for you. I don't have the details for all of our privately-owned public spaces in front of me.
Well, this one, then, since we do have this one in front of us.
Is that a question or a statement?
Yes, sir. I understand. I don't want to expect you, through the chair, to speak to all of our privately-owned public spaces. I know they've proliferated. I'm asking about this one in particular, which is bound by this easement agreement to dawn till dusk, whereas all of the publicly-owned parks and playgrounds in the city are available from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
You are correct.
All right. Well, then, there we have it. Mr. President, I don't have any further questions about this, except for our continuing tendency to pursue these privately-owned public spaces. In this case, this is actually a really good use of the tool, I would say, as creating a temporary space en route to a larger one. It's only my fervent wish that we were actually going towards the creation of publicly-owned parks. Thank you.
Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleague from Ward 2 for catching that. I missed that dawn-to-dusk part. I'll just say, I would love to see some sort of revisiting of this at some point. I'll just point out, in the winter, dusk comes before the close of business. You know, we're talking about, yeah, anyway, I would love to see a rethink of that dusk guy. You know, I don't know if, maybe one for committee, but I would love to see a rethink of that as a, for POPS and later hours there. Thanks.
Councilor Scott.
On that, Mr. President, this is an easement to maintenance agreement, which becomes recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so it would require a dissolution of this and then a re-recording of a new one if there was going to be any change. I'm not even sure you can. All right. Counselor, my colleague from Ward 6 is helping me out on that one. Thank you.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for just talking to myself and distracting my colleague from Ward 2 while he had the floor. I think it's an excellent catch, as is often the case. I would, I guess I threw you, I asked the Director, and I apologize if I missed this early, if there's any particular time sensitivity to this, because the good councillor from Ward 2, to the best of my understanding, is correct that this becomes something that is registered with the Registry of Deeds. Therefore, we should get it right before we vote on it. And so if we can, timing-wise, I'd like to either table it or send it to committee so that we can make sure we're not, that the privately, the private folks who are going to operate this park aren't shutting it down in the middle of the afternoon four months of the year. Thank you.
Director, can you speak to the, what would happen if we were to wait till next meeting on this? The amendment can be changed.
Yeah, this will delay things for at least a couple of weeks, so delaying getting the certificate of occupancy for this building and opening up this open space. We may miss some critical time this fall where people could use this open space.
And can you remind me, you said this is for a temporary situation. How long?
That's a great question. I would expect it's going to be for a couple of years at least. It's really tied to development prospects for those subsequent phases of the project. So I would assume that this is going to be a temporary situation for at least five years. That's my guess.
My read of the council is that they would like to see this amended to match the hours of the rest of the parks in the city, if this is going to be in place for five years. I don't think any of us want to see this situation delayed, but that's my read of where we are on this. Colleagues, lay this on the table till the next meeting. So the clerk is just explaining, this cannot be like amended by the council. A new item will need to be submitted. So procedurally, we can either place it on file and assume they'll bring in a new one, or lay it on the table and assume they'll bring in a new one. Either way, that's what I think it's going to take to get this council to vote for this at the next meeting. All right, so let's lay it on the table. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
The next item is item 7.2, a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $141,300 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the E911 Personal Services Other Lump Sum Benefits Account to fund a collective bargaining agreement with SEIU Local 888, E911 Call Taker Dispatchers Union.
Solicitor Sirigu.
Good evening, councilors. Through you, Council President. This is an appropriation request to fund the retroactive component of the Emergency Telecommunicators Contract. The contract itself was ratified by this body on August 22nd, and then the new wages went into effect, and we just need the appropriation for the July 1, 2023, to the ratification date wage increases, et cetera.
Seeing no questions, that item is approved with a roll call vote.
On the item, Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Said.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Panada Neufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is approved.
Excellent. Next item, please.
And the next item will be item, the next item will be item 7.5, a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $46,170 from the Salary Contingency Account to various E911 Personal Services Accounts to fund a collective bargaining settlement with SEIU Local 888, E911 Call Taker Dispatchers Union.
Questions on this item? Seeing none, that item is approved. Does not need a roll call, as you all know. Next item.
And that will return us to the regular order of business and item 4.1, an order by Councilor Ewan Kempin, that the chief of police resume the practice of issuing tickets rather than warnings for serious moving violations that endanger public safety, including speeding and running red lights. Councilor Ewan Kempin.
Thank you, Madam President. Dangerous driving is one of the single most pressing public health dangers in the city. Every single one of us knows that making the streets safer is a top priority, and we also know the most impactful, long-term thing that we can do to make streets safer is to redesign them, to change the infrastructure. This council, the administration, this community, has put an enormous amount of resources and effort into major undertakings to redesign the streets, and we are already seeing meaningful outcomes. But in addition to traffic calming, to infrastructure changes, I think we all know that police enforcement is also a tool in our toolkit. And recently, much to their credit, the administration made a number of data sets public related to our police department. I am really grateful for this. I know many people in our community are, too. I think this kind of transparency is incredibly helpful. And a Somerville resident who has a lot of quantitative know-how with this kind of data set reached out to me and told me he had been crunching the numbers on traffic enforcement specifically. And he was really surprised to see in 2023, of the 901 stops for speeding... surprised to see in 2023, of the 901 stops for speeding, 44 were actual tickets and the rest are marked as warnings. So that means more than 95% of the traffic stops that are happening, for speeding specifically, are just warnings. It's a similar breakdown for other kind of moving violations. Now, there's obviously a lot going on here. Maybe they're pulling people over for a very minor speeding, and they're just saying, hey, slow down. It's also, I want to be clear, it is, I was really struck by the 95% number, so maybe this data is encoded in a way that I'm not fully understanding, and if I'm wrong, I would really like to be corrected. But assuming these are real numbers, I think it's really worth discussing and reconsidering. I think all of us have seen firsthand, here regularly from residents, about increased, really, really reckless driving. Wrong way on one-way streets, blowing through red lights, speeding at dangerous speeds. And I don't think any of us can pretend we're going to ticket our way out of this, but I do think that the sense that there are no consequences is a contributing factor. So my ask is that we have a conversation about this with the new chief, with staff analysts, and that we take a look at really the most dangerous kind of driving behaviors, the things that could really hurt or kill residents, and start enforcing these with more serious consequences. So I would ask that this please be referred to Traffic and Parking.
Counsel Davis and Counsel Wilson would like to sign on. Counsel Wilson?
Thanks, Madam President. Yeah, I want to thank my colleague for bringing this forward. You know, like, he mentioned infrastructure improvements showing to be the best practice in the long run, but I don't know. It seems to me drivers just increasingly just fear no consequence for their behavior behind the wheel. You know, our focus on educational warnings, while well-intentioned, just doesn't seem to be working. So we have these scofflaw drivers, we'll say, effing around, and I think it's high time they found out.
Counsel Said would like to sign on. Counsel McLaughlin?
Mr. President, I'll sign on as well, and just say, the word "consequences," I think that's been used a lot lately for a number of violations in the city, so I'm glad to see people talking about that. I do think there is a lack of fear of consequences. There are people scoffing at a lot of laws in this city, and I think people are rightfully confused about what laws are enforced and what laws are not enforced. And according to the outgoing chief, the City Council has a lot of power and responsibility over what laws get enforced and don't. So I appreciate this, and I hope we just consider this for the many laws that people seem to be violating in the city.
I'd like to sign on as well, Madam Clerk. And so would Counsel Klingon. All right, next item?
Item 4.2 is an order by Counsel Said, that the Director of Mobility install speed limit signage and update the signage to no motorized vehicles and include scooters and mopeds along the community path and at all its various entrances.
Counsel Wilson would like to sign on. Counsel Said, as would Counsel Panetta Neufeld, Strezzo, Burnley, Mbah, myself, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. And thank you, Mr. President. So constituents have been reaching out to me about this. The last constituent who reached out to me is a pregnant woman, and just finding it very unsafe to walk on the path these days. And as a mom with a toddler, we walk a lot to the playground and back, and it's something I see on a daily basis, the scooters, going at high speed, mopeds, electric bikes. So I reached out to Director Rossen and also to Lieutenant Rymel. Lieutenant Rymel, the next day, he had officers all along the path just to see what's happening, and multiple, like apparently many scooter users were stopped. And a lot of them actually shared that they were not aware that scooters cannot be used on the community path because it says "motor vehicle" are not allowed on the signs. So anyhow, Lieutenant Rymel suggested to change that sign to "motorized vehicles" and add scooters and mopeds, just so it's very clear. And the other thing is the speed limit. I think we're all seeing it with the electric bikes. It's just, we know that the community path is being used by everyone, whether you're walking, you are jogging, or on a bike. So I think this hopefully will make it safer for everyone to use the community path.
Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. Thank you to Counsel Said. We were just talking about this somewhere recently. I can't... Anyway, and I suggest, you know, I know the cops can't be everywhere all the time, and I asked the city solicitor, or if someone could look into, how do we, how can we come up with a fine? Like, how do we impose a fine? It is an infraction, but could we, if there's a sign with a stiff penalty that says, you know, "motorized vehicles prohibited, $250 fine," it's going to stop that, you know, food delivery person from taking that shortcut and putting everybody at risk on their moped or scooter. Like, we're not talking even this electric bike, but people are going on these mopeds and scooters. So I think we need some, a sign with a really stiff penalty, financial penalty. I think that'll hopefully deter people from taking the chance. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate the sentiment here. I would ask that before rolling out signage, that we, with the relevant city departments, consult with the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, in addition to all the other users of that path. I see folks in, like, rascal scooters and motorized electric wheelchairs. I certainly don't think it's the intention to exclude those very fundamental accessibility devices from the path, but I also want to make sure that, A, we are considering those voices, and B, make it explicitly clear what is welcome and not welcome on those paths. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. President?
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Just PSA for the public watching. I think it's Mass General Law that actually says mopeds, scooters, considered motorized bicycles, I believe, under Mass General Law, can use bike lanes. They may not use things like non-road bicycle paths. So that's, that's what we're dealing with here.
Counselor Strezzo, then McLaughlin.
Thank you. I would like to suggest, when this is taken up, that the signs are in picture only, which that way it straddles everybody in the conversation when we talk about motorized vehicles. So a picture of a scooter, and of course, an electric scooter. So perhaps a little chartered dangling from the, I'm not sure how they can figure that out. But I also want to just bring attention to the point that if, another thing I hear a lot from constituents are electric bikes and just the compassion of using a bell when someone, especially someone with a child or a toddler who are unpredictable and walk fast and veer off into different lanes and don't understand the concept of the lanes necessarily on the community path, that you're using your bell when somebody, when you are behind someone and going 15, 20 miles an hour, and not assuming that someone can see you coming from behind. So I'm hoping that we're also considering that. Now, that doesn't mean that I want that in this item, but I'm bringing this up since we're talking about it, that that, we have to have that conversation, too. That's all.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I love this bike lane. I use it almost every day now, especially now that I'm bringing my boy to preschool. I've recently joined the e-bike club, and I hope to ride with all of you someday. And I use it to take my son to preschool. So I've noticed, like, crazy increase in traffic. Like, it is a busy intersection, especially during high-traffic hours. So I definitely appreciate this. I think it's needed. I do think there will probably be an enforcement element to this because people don't always respect signs. And I just want to flag that, you know, a few months ago, we had before us, the Council basically spoke in opposition to non-monetary fines to people using the bike lane and police handing out flyers informing people of bike safety. I think with an e-bike, it is hard for a person to separate a e-bike from a regular bike, and the speed is really what's important. So I just want to put that out there for people to consider that, you know, I think we did send a message recently to not enforce anything on the bike lane, and I think we should reconsider that.
Counsel, did you want this to go to committee? Did you want this to go to committee? To Traffic and Parking? This item is referred to Traffic and Parking.
That brings us to Item 4.3, an order by Counsel Panetta Neufeld, that the Director of Health and Human Services discuss with this Council the findings from the recent U.S. Surgeon General Advisory on the Mental Health and Well-being of Parents and its recommendations to better support parents and caregivers.
Counsel Strezzo would like to sign on. Counsel Panetta Neufeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. So about a month ago, as you have seen, there's a report has also attached this item. The U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory about the mental health and well-being of parents. It came from recent data from the American Psychological Association that showed that 48% of parents say most days their stress is completely overwhelming, compared to 26% of other adults who reported the same. 48%. Like, most of the folks who are on this horseshoe are parents, and at least half of us feel like our stress is completely overwhelming most days. Parents obviously are navigating traditional hardships in addition to lots of new stressors. And as a new parent myself, it took me about a month to read through this advisory, which made me chuckle because, you know, I'm the target audience here. But what's really interesting about the advisory is that on, towards the end, on page 23, which I highly encourage you all to look through, there's a whole set of recommendations on what local and state governments can do to support parents better. And I just want to bring this to the attention of our city staff and administration. Think about, you know, how do we commit to prioritizing programs that support parents and caregivers across our community? Things like funding for programs that support parents and caregivers. We all know about the Child Care Assistance Program that was ARPA-funded. You know, where is that going? Are we going to include that in our general fund budget? Lots of questions here about paid family leave, right? How are we supporting our staff, making sure folks have access to affordable healthcare? And really interestingly, a section about investing in social infrastructure, so making sure we're building community amongst parents and families and caregivers in our community. So I'm hoping we can have a conversation, and I am perhaps suggesting we send this to Equity to have that conversation. But I'd love to connect our city administration into the recommendations from this report and see, you know, what we can do better at the city level.
Thank you. This item is referred to the Committee on Equity. Counsel Said would also like to sign on.
Item 4.4 is an order by Counselors Panetta Neufeld and Wilson, that the Director of Parks and Recreation discuss with this Council the recent cancellation and rescheduling of the Fall Festival originally scheduled for September 21st.
Counsel Panetta Neufeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Looky here, folks. Directly related to investing in social infrastructure and building community, here's an opportunity for us to do this better as a city. So there was a Fall Festival scheduled for last Saturday. 30 minutes before it was scheduled to begin, there was a cancellation notice sent out only to people who have registered for the Recreation Department emails, not sent out through any city official channels and not on our city social media, which is where the original Fall Festival was advertised the day before. On the flyer for the Fall Festival was a rain location. It was raining last Saturday, and so, like many parents, I was bundling my toddler to head to the rain location. I thankfully saw the email before I walked out the door. As most parents of toddlers know, it takes us a full half hour or more to walk out the door with our child, and I was just lucky enough to see it before I walked out the door. But I got bombarded by questions and comments from parents on social media about what happened, why didn't we use the rain location. It subsequently got rescheduled to tonight in the rain location, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., which, again, isn't always a great time for parents, families, especially of younger children. And so Counsel Wilson and I were talking, I will let him share his personal experience from that day as well, just kind of figuring out what happened and how do we avoid these kinds of, you know, miscommunications on the city's part from impacting our families. It's, the reason I put these orders together, Mr. President, is because they are related, that I think about, you know, the ways in which Somerville gets a reputation as not being as family-friendly as some of our neighboring communities. And it's sort of like death by a thousand paper cuts, right? It's, okay, so one Fall Festival got rescheduled. Okay. But it's, there's sort of a constant lack of care for families and caregivers and parents in our community that feels thematic. And as a parent myself, I am seeing it and experiencing it on a whole new level. And so I'm hoping we can talk about this. I'm not sure, Counsel Wilson, what you think, but perhaps Equity, to see how do we avoid mistakes like this in the future.
Counsel Wilson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. And thank you to Counsel Panetta Neufeld for writing this up. Yeah, I was going to go to this with my kids on Saturday morning. I looked out, I was like, oh, surely it's moved to the rain location. I couldn't find anything. I went to the same city social media accounts that had blasted out the news about it. There was nothing there. My oldest walked over to Trump Field and texted saying, there's nothing here, at which point I texted the DPW Commissioner, and my oldest set off, I said, well, it must be at the rain. There is a rain location. I'm sure it's there. So they set off walking over to, in the rain, to the Founder's Rink. Fortunately, the DPW Commissioner got back to me very quickly and said, oh, no, it's completely canceled. It was apparently news to DPW crews, and it just did not get communicated well out through city official channels. And like Counsel Panetta Neufeld, I heard a lot about it from other families who were not very understanding about what had happened, justifiably upset. I was able to get ahold of my oldest before they walked all the way to Founder's. That would have been very rough. But yeah, I just, I would love to know what can be done to make sure that this doesn't happen again. It just is not, it's just not cool to do to families. And yeah, thanks.
Thank you both. We'll refer this to Equity. I will also say, I have a friend who texted me last Easter. He lives in a city that shall not be named, and said, I just brought my two-year-old to the city's Easter egg hunt, and it had been canceled with no notification, and like, you would not believe the menace. And I said, wow. You know, we make mistakes in Somerville, but we would never do something like that. And how the mighty have fallen. Counsel Burnley?
Thank you. Through the Chair, if I could add a friendly amendment, I think the Director of Comms should also be part of this conversation because it strikes me that they might have, well, have had a role or should have a role in making sure that this is communicated out. Take it or leave it.
Yeah, why don't we have the Chair of Equity when they're working on with staff? We can get the Comms Department there as well?
Item 4.5 is an order by Counsel Klingon, that the Commissioner of Public Works provide this Council with a list of the elevators in all city buildings, the operational status of each elevator, and the maintenance and inspection records for each.
Counsel Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. I just want to make sure that we're maintaining the elevators properly. I know that the case at the Winter Hill ended up being the utility company, but I know that we've had other issues. I know the Annex Building, there's a question as to whether or not, right now, the elevator's working. So I'm not sure what committee to send this to. Maybe I don't need to send it to committee, or maybe it's just...
I would say Public Works and Public Utilities.
Okay, that.
I would also like to co-sponsor this, as would Counsel Burnley. I want to note, I don't think this has come up in a Council meeting, but there is a Somerville Housing Authority building in Ward Three on Warren Ave called Preparacy Manor. It's an 11-story senior and low-income building. The elevators, both elevators were out in that building for over a week. There are senior citizens on the 11th floor of that building. The firefighters, the fire department was there. They were kind of emergency-taking people in and out for food and medication. It was a disaster, a total nightmare. We don't oversee the Somerville Housing Authority, you know. Several days into that, I was in touch with them, but we don't have authority over them. But I would hope that as part of this conversation, we can also bring them in because, you know, those are some of our most vulnerable residents.
Thank you. And Mr. President, I'll just say through you that elevators are just notoriously bad. You know, it's like, it's like an old car, like from the 60s. These things just constantly break down. And, you know, we're at the mercy of the elevator repair companies who, there's probably more elevators than there are elevator repairmen. So that's something that anybody looking for a career move to get into is, seriously, like, you know, that's a trade that is very well-paid and very understaffed, so.
Thank you. We'll refer this to Public Utilities.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselors Wilson and Ewan Campin, that the Director of Mobility update this Council... update this council on the current timeline for the Highland Avenue redesign project.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, I am once again asking for an update on a project that started back in 2021 before being put on hold. That's the Highland Ave redesign project. That utility work was completed under Highland Ave earlier this year. Construction work on the Highland Ave redesign could have started this summer if that planning had happened already. I know this is a capital investment plan question now. We have been promised an update on the CIP this fall. I just want to make sure that the current, the recent partial paving of Highland Ave doesn't result in complacency in the sense that there's not an urgency to get this redesigned project going. I'd ask this be sent to Traffic and Parking or Finance, whichever one, for discussion.
Thank you. I will just say, we have consistently been told by the administration that there has been no change to the schedule, meaning that the community process is to start in the spring or summer of 2025. That said, this is clearly part of the capital improvement plan. And kind of until I see this being part of official plan moving forward, I'm going to remain extremely skeptical, because we have waited a very, very long time for this. So yes, why don't we refer this to Traffic and Parking? And Counselor Davis would like to sign on as well. Did I miss a hand? Excellent. Next item, please.
Item 4.7 is in order by Councilors Wilson and Mbah, that the Chairman of the Board of Election Commissioners report to this council the number of in-person early voting ballots in each election since the inception of early voting, as well as the cost of early voting in the 2023 municipal election.
Inception. Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, Commissioner Salerno from Elections says in-person voting numbers have continued to decline with the advent of vote-by-mail, which has been cannibalizing a lot of those numbers. So I'd love to get some hard data on the usage trends for in-person early voting, and would be interested in seeing some of the associated costs with it. And if it turns out we're spending a significant amount of money for something that really isn't being used very much, I'd be interested in hearing from the public on whether they want to continue using those public funds in that way, or whether vote-by-mail meets the demand for early voting, given we have a vote-by-mail drop box in front of City Hall. I'd love to give Elections time to respond to this. They're in their busy season right now, given the 2024 general election is just over a month away. But I'd love to do, if the data comes back in time, I'd love to do a subsequent item for a public hearing in early December to hear from the public about how they feel about this.
Would you like this to go to committee?
I don't think it needs to go to committee. We're looking for data, yeah.
Item 4.8 is a resolution by Councilors Wilson and Burnley, that the administration facilitate bike parking for large licensed public events in the city.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks again, Mr. President. Counselor Burnley, a number of us were down at the Gilman Square Arts and Music Festival recently. And the genesis of this order was seen, a lot of bikes just sort of strewn all over the place because there wasn't a great spot to put them. And talking to a constituent who suggested, why couldn't the city look into figuring out some sort of portable temporary bike parking situation that could be rolled out for larger-scale events in the city? You know, possibly some sort of trigger involving public events. You know, on the form, there's an estimated attendance that's specified, and if we could figure out what would make sense to do that for. I'm interested in hearing from the administration about possible funding for this, and from city staff about the feasibility of including this in the setup for these events. So I just think it'd be great to make it easier and more convenient for folks to bike to these events, given, you know, our interest in doing that in general, and the fact that these events often close streets and make parking difficult. So it just makes sense to encourage biking.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair for recognizing me, and thank you to my colleague at-large for bringing this item forward. Yeah, I just want to highlight that this resolution is intentionally vague. It says for large licensed public events. What does "large" mean? Counselor Wilson and I talked about, perhaps it's above 400 people in attendance, or about 500 people in attendance. Having looked over a number of public event licenses, in Somerville, they really straddle a gambit of sizes, from events that are 100 to 200, to some events that are in the tens of thousands. Those are rare, but we do have many events that go over 1,000 people and are known to do so annually. But the members of our community wanting to get there should have the option to bike. And the available bike stations or places to lock up your bike are inadequate when these events get large. So I just want to note that I'm interested in the outcome of this. I'm interested in us finding some kind of solution. I think there are a number of ways to do that, whether that is the administration creating a policy that says, if it's above that many people, then we're going to bring in a space for the bikes to be locked up. There could also be, there is a form, a portion of the form that a public events applicants fill out that says, if they're going to provide parking, perhaps we could modify the form to ask if they want to request biking space, or some kind of structure for bikes to be brought in. I think what's really important is that we have this conversation, we get into the details of how we assess these things, and that ultimately, we meet our community where they are and advance our green goals by doing so. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Mr. President, the growing pains of moving to a society that involves more bicycles. I love this idea, love actually including bicycle parking on the public events permits. I would also note that I don't think there's actually enough bicycle parking in front of City Hall for all the city councilors who have the bikes, much less members of the public or anybody else. So, you know, I know we're all thinking about roads, but it's been nice to have a bunch of bike talk tonight, too, sir. Thank you.
Yes, what public events are more thrilling than our city council meetings? I will note at the Fluff Festival, Mass Bike was doing bike valet, which was great. They may have done it in the past. I had never noticed it. That seemed like a great service. Did you guys have a committee in mind? Say that again, please.
Through the chair, Traffic and Parking, maybe?
Excellent. This item is referred to Traffic and Parking.
Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Equity Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations, meeting on September 19th, 2024.
Counselor Strezzo.
We had a great conversation on Thursday, September 19th. We had all members in attendance. We discussed a lot of ADA accessibility and started with the ADA Coordinator talking about the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan Task Force. She responded to say that the plan is to use, the plan developed in 2013, moving forward, to create those data points for comparison as they move forward with the Transition Plan Task Force. We talked about, we had some members of the Commissions of Persons with Disability stop by and speak, and the importance of swings and getting an inclusive playgrounds. This has been an ongoing conversation in the committee. We talked, and we had Director Oliviera there, the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry. She was fantastic in breaking down the process and where we are in the process. The hope and the plan is that in winter, we should have them installed. And they're assessing as well the breakdown of pilot, putting one in each ward, and then assessing, well, which playgrounds would be most utilizing these swings. We talked about the Braille Embosser, oh, the elusive Braille Embosser. Well, its new home is the Racial and Social Justice Department over in the TAB Building. And there is, so there was a good conversation on that. Check the meeting notes on that. And we talked about some other items as well. You can check the minutes on this. I ask that these meeting minute notes be accepted as submitted.
Excellent. On that committee report, Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Very briefly through the chair, I want to thank Counselor Strezzo for keeping the item I put forward in committee. That would be the seventh item on their agenda. I ask the Department of Racial and Social Justice, specifically for the proposals, the policy proposals from the Anti-Violence Working Group that was convened last year, and they sent a memo that essentially said, we'll give you that at the end of this year, which, you know, it was, I find kind of strange, but, you know, at least it's an answer. The answer is, we're not going to give you the answers until later. So happy that this item remains in committee until those answers are actually given. Thank you.
Excellent. That committee report is approved.
Item 6B is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on September 24th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on Tuesday night, September 24th. We had four or five members present. We took up a seven-item agenda over the course of a 58-minute meeting. We did ultimately unanimously recommend approval of all seven items. Nearly everything was very self-explanatory and didn't feature much, if any, discussion. I'll note, I really appreciated the staff memo attached to the item when submitted for the OSE grant in kind. I'm here for that kind of innovation. It's great to just have that uploaded with the item. Almost all the time, I will say, lion's share of the time was spent on a $6 million bonding item for the FY25 street and sidewalk reconstruction. Director Postaway gave a great presentation. It's attached to the meeting in Legislature. If you go looking in the item, it's not going to be there. You have to go to the meeting. It's a quirk of our system. I do want to remind everyone that while this is called the FY25 Street and Sidewalk Reconstruction, most of the construction, actual construction work is going to happen in subsequent years. It's just, it's when it goes out to bid, they call it that. So don't think that just because something's in there, it's going to happen here in the next nine months. Two big focuses this year in terms of the streets. The intersection of Glenn Street and Tough Street in East Somerville is getting a major glow up. We were very excited that it's right there by Somerville's newest park. And also, West Broadway is a big focus. It's going to look significantly different with some of the work that's going into that. Also new this year was a focus on ADA improvements. That was mentioned in the presentation. Great to see that. I asked specifically about problematic areas like the infamous sidewalk that Counselor Ewan Campan knows all too well on Walnut Street coming out of Union Square. It's made impassable by enormous roots from an awesomely old and giant tree. I asked whether curb bumpouts and the engineering required to do those on a street with a steep incline like Walnut might be funded by this. No promises were made, but it could be part of that. So I would just urge folks to advocate for things like that. I think it's important. That street in particular is a major point of access for folks coming from the north into Union Square. And it's really tough on, you know, anyone that needs any sort of mobility device, parents pushing strollers. It's just tough on anyone. So with that, I'll ask the committee report be accepted as submitted.
That committee report is approved, which puts a few roll calls before us.
It does indeed. There are two items now before the council for approval. The first is item 24-1225, authorization to borrow $6,000,8969 in a bond for street and sidewalk reconstruction. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is approved. And the next item before the council is item 24-1227, the appropriation of $56,215.42 from the Bike Share Stabilization Fund for installation and startup costs for a Blue Bike Station at 200 Intervelt Road. On that item, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is approved. And that brings us to the next item, which is 6C, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on September 17th, 2024.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet on that date. We really only had one substantive item on the agenda. That was an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to add sections designed to promote and enforce safer construction practices. The crux of this new ordinance is that it is essentially requiring a piece of paper that shows that the folks who are projects that are subject to federal safety regulations, OSHA regulations, are following them. The reason is, so the key is that, and I confirmed this with Director Antonavica multiple times in the meeting, that this is not creating any additional obligations that don't already exist. It does two things for us. It, A, just reminds folks, in case they aren't following them, that they need to. And the act of having to confirm to the city that they are, hopefully, in any circumstance where, for whatever reason, someone might not be following them, will encourage them or require them to follow them. And it also gives the city some enforcement authority. Obviously, the city doesn't have authority to enforce OSHA regulations, but at the very least, they could issue stop-work orders if a project hadn't filed the paperwork with the city showing that they were in compliance with OSHA. So it doesn't give us the right to issue, you know, fines or significant punishment that the federal regulation would have, but at least helps, gives us another tool to make sure the projects are safe and that all of the good folks working on those projects aren't put in harm's way. This was recommended for approval, and I, with that, request that the report be accepted as submitted.
That committee report is approved.
And that puts one item before the council for enrollment and ordainment. And that is item 24-0716, ordainment of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to add sections 8-375 through 8-381 to promote and enforce safer construction practices. On enrollment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is ordained. And the next item will be item 6D, a report of the Committee on Open Space, Environment, and Energy, meeting on September 19th, 2024.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on September 19th with four members in attendance. And of the four items on the agenda, we discussed two in details. First, we received a report from Director Blaze, Office of Sustainability and the Environment, on the activities to create a pilot program of curbside organic waste pickup for composting. The city council approved an appropriation of $350,000 in the fiscal year 2025 budget for this purpose. Director Blaze reported that they have applied for a federal grant of $400,000 to add to the city funding. Together, this will enable a two-year program that can reach 2,500 households for curbside organic waste pickup. Their proposal will be to operate in four environmental justice neighborhoods, Davis Square, East Somerville, Ten Hills, and Winter Hill. The Pacifician household in this will be selected by means testing. The committee members questioned why a means testing selection is being considered, since this will likely add administrative costs and complexity to the scheduling and routine operations. It might be more practical to get better results if the pilot concentrated on re-enrolling all the households in specific zones and focus on blocks that have the highest problems with rats. The Office of Sustainability and Environment will be sending to the committee more details on their proposal, including cost calculation. So we kept this item in committee for further discussion. Next, the second report that the committee received was from Parks and Recreation Department on the numbers of children who had attended the various sports, recreation, and arts craft programs during the summer. Why it was clear that Parks and Rec did a good job... craft programs during the summer. Why, it was clear that Parks and Rec did a good job working with lots of kids, and my kids were also part of the program. You know, committee members posed questions about whether there are sufficient programs and enough capacity to reach all the kids who wanted to take part. We heard comments from different parents, you know, that had problems using the website and to enroll their kids in various programs, particularly swimming classes, fill up quickly, and some kids had to be turned away. Parks and Recreation will continue to review the data from the summer to highlight any shortcomings and determine whether additional activities and larger number of kids can be accommodated in their programs. Moving forward, again, we left this in, in, in committee for further discussion. She sent out a really healthy spreadsheet, but wasn't there to answer questions. So we also heard for a later meeting, a series of questions for the Office of Sustainability and Environment on the implementation of many recommendations in the Climate Forward Plan. Finally, you know, we're able to mark as work complete the resolution in the delays in completing Revis Field because that was already in operation. So I hope this committee report be accepted as presented.
Councilor Pineda Neufeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to Councilor Mbah, I just have some questions. I get asked a lot about the composting pilot. And so I was reading through the, the meeting minutes. It says that there's, there's going to be 2,500 households in specific neighborhoods, as you mentioned, selected for the pilot. Have those households been informed already? Been selected? No? Okay.
That's why we, we, at the next meeting, we would dive deep into this. So we kept this item in committee. Thank you, the good councilor from West Haven. There was a lot of unanswered questions in this, you know, conversation that we didn't want to dwell on it. So we said we will have further conversation on next week.
Mr. President, one more question to Councilor Mbah. Thank you. And I noticed there's lots of questions here in the minutes. The, I know you specifically, Chair Mbah, asked about the timeline for the composting program. And the director said there is a comprehensive timeline that begins November 2024. Is there, do we have any more details on that timeline, or is that going to be talked about at the next meeting?
I think, thank you, to you, Mr. President. They would give us more details at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. That committee report is approved.
The next item is item 6F, a report of the Special Committee on School Building, Facilities, and Maintenance, meeting on September 25th, 2024.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet last night. There were a number of items on the agenda. Unfortunately, we only got through two, through two topics. One was actually two separate items, both relating to updates on the Massachusetts School Building Authority process for Winter Hill and Brown School. Director Raich gave an update on, on that process and those, and the meetings. And then we heard from a consultant, from CBI, who had presented a slide deck and explained the, the construction advisory group process and the, and the, and the public outreach that, that is planned. Almost simultaneously, we, there was a new, press releases going out, or perhaps there were earlier in the day, naming members of the construction advisory group. Discussion from the members of, and this is a, to be, this is a joint meeting of the, the City Council Special Committee, as well as the School Committees, Special Committee on Buildings, Facilities, and Maintenance. So members of, of both the council and the school committee expressed frustration with the, the timing, with the, the, what was perceived as a, a delay in, in getting any of this started, the fact that we're hearing from a consultant who's presenting slides on how things are going to be organized and how public process will work. Members noted that there's been significant public input, that the, the Brown School community and the Winter Hill School, School community have, have had significant discussions and, and provided input, and that we are significantly down the road. Director Raich stated that it's the administration's expectation that any ballot override that will be necessary wouldn't be able to make it onto the ballot for 2025. So we're now yet another full year down the road before anything happens. You can hear in my voice, I guess, perhaps a editorializing, I shared some of that frustration on the, on the timing. Those two items, well, actually, did I mark, those as work completed? Mr. Chair, the, the, there's a standing item. So, so the, the item that requested CBI to come was, marks as work completed. If we inadvertently marked the standing items as work completed, we will fix that at the next meeting to, I think we could do that at the next meeting, Madam Clerk, right, rather than changing that designation?
Do you want to say the item?
I want to, no, the, the, the item two that was on the agenda is a standing item that should remain in committee. It looks like it says it's work completed here, and I may have inadvertently indicated that last night.
Do you want to sever it?
Okay. So, so then I will, at the end of my report, I will move to sever, sever that item and send it back to committee. The second item that we discussed was to, I gotta jump ahead to it here, to, that, discuss restrictions in place for public school use of the Revis Field, the new field down the hill here from City Hall that is part of the high school building project. And I'm not going to go into a whole lot of the detail. The crux of it is, the football team wants to use sleds that the kids hit instead of hitting each other at practice. And the position of Department of Public Works is that that will do some damage to the turf. And there's, seems to be, they seem to be at an impasse. After what I, as Chair, felt was a significant amount of discussion, and, and we heard from, from Principal Kirsten, from Athletic Director Viera, as well as Superintendent Carmona, as well as the Commissioner of Public Works on this issue, I stopped the conversation, apologized to all of them for their having to come out in the evening and, and provide these well-articulated arguments to a committee of the City Council that has absolutely no say in this matter and really should have nothing to do with it. And I shared my personal view as one member of the committee, that it was effectively a waste of their time and the committee's time, that this is something that clearly should have been resolved prior to the beginning of football season. And we kept this item in committee, as well as all the other items in committee, because we'd frankly run out of time. But I do hope that in the future, and I've already had conversations with, with you, Mr. President, as you know, as well as with the administration, on, on ways to better use this committee's time on future agenda items, which I alluded to earlier this evening. All of the other items were kept in committee because we took up all our time and couldn't get to them. So with that, I will request that the report be accepted as submitted and move to sever item 240466 and send it back to committee, because that is intended to be a standing item that we get an update on the MSBA process at each of these meetings.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I jumped in on, onto this meeting last night after sort of getting pulled in on the Revis Field thing. I'll just say, I don't understand why there hasn't been a compromise worked out here where, for those of, you can look out the window and see the field. There's a U-10 soccer field that is most of it. And then there's a whole area off on the side between the east goal and the high school that's just unmarked turf. And I don't understand why there, we just don't have a compromise in place where blocking sleds would, would just be used on that part of the field over there, where if they tore it up, I mean, less than perfect, but it's not going to impact the, the soccer pitch at all. I don't get it. That seems like just a very logical solution to this. So I don't know. I'm just naming that.
Thank you both. That committee report is approved.
Item 6G is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on September 16th, 2024.
Councilor Said.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Traffic and Parking Committee met on September 16th with all three members present. All items were marked as completed. Regarding the process of adjusting and monitoring the traffic signals in Davis Square, Director Rosson outlined the project that has been done to upgrade the electronics of the traffic signal system. The next step is to lengthen green light and shorten red lights to allow for better movement of buses. Grant funding has been secured and technology has been installed to assist in the process. Next, we discussed the longstanding issues with service reliability with the Union Square D-line branch of the Green Line. Councilor Ewan Campen was present. And when asked on how best to work together moving forward, Director Rosson responded that there are no great answers or specific information to how operational decisions are being made by the MBTA and in what ways the city can best collaborate with them. One of Jared Johnson, the Executive Director of Transit Matters, spoke to the difficulties on the E-branch specifically running through neighborhoods and agreed that the TE should have better communication with riders on express trains. He identified issues with the branch. T-tracking does not get real-time tracking until it starts moving. Regarding the intersection change of Meacham and Fremont Streets to a four-way stop, we have been told that this location will be added to the evaluation list. The request to have more visible stop signs at the intersection of Meacham and Morland Streets and Meacham and Fremont Streets, Director Renfret responded that observation and review has been, have been done to the site, and the signage has been deemed appropriate. Regarding the request to install solar-powered your speed is signs on Morland Street, Director Renfret confirmed that the review has been done, and there is no evidence that the sign does not allow, does not slow speed, and that are other gaming methods that can be tried first. Regarding the request to install additional signage to address illegal turns on Morland Street, according to Director Rosson, the signage is in place and visible. Lieutenant Rymel will launch preemptive measures to ensure motorists are adhering to the laws in the area. Regarding the request to install speed humps, Director Rosson confirmed Meacham Street has been prioritized for speed humps. They will be, they're scheduled to be constructed this fall, and Morland Street will be added to the list for evaluation. Lieutenant Rymel shared that the number of tickets issued this year for vehicles with illegal license covers is 12 to 15. With that, I ask that this committee report be approved as submitted.
Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to thank the Traffic and Parking Chair for a really great committee meeting. I want to underline for colleagues the fact that Lieutenant Rymel of the Police Department's Traffic Unit is very eager to work with councilors to do special enforcement in areas that we identify as areas of concern. I want to thank SPD for, for a collaborative approach with the council on this. And I'll say, I plan on engaging with them, hopefully resulting in some monetary citations for drivers who think our motor vehicle regulations don't apply to them, as we discussed earlier.
Councilor Said.
I will say that also, much gratitude to Lieutenant Rymel, as he mentioned earlier today in the meeting. I reached out to him literally the next day. He had officers along the community path, and he just has been very responsive. So I encourage everyone to work with him.
That committee report is approved.
The next item is item 7.3.
Mr. President, can I wave, move to wave the readings of items 7.3, 7.4, and 7.6 to 7.9, and ask those be sent to Finance, not to cut off the clerk?
Those items are referred to Finance.
Item 7.10 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of an exemption for Peter George as required by Master and Lodge, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Would colleagues like to review these in confirmation of appointments? Are folks ready to take these up tonight? All right. Let's take these up tonight.
President.
Yes.
Could we maybe get an explanation about what this is?
Certainly. Is there someone here from the mayor's office who could explain these tonight? Director Singh, can you speak to these exemptions?
Through the president, staff is not available tonight to speak to these items, but...
Okay. Clerk Wells, please.
Through the president, the, you may remember sort of recently approving the similar items for some members of the, wait, I'm going to get it backwards, for some school staff who wanted to work for Parks and Recreation. And now there are some Parks and Recreation who want to work as school staff. And in order to do that, the council is required to approve the exemption so that the city can pay the same individual to do both of those jobs. Within the disclosures, you will read that they do have to acknowledge that the, you know, they're not double-dipping, basically, that the two jobs do not overlap. And if you have any questions about the specific nature of what they've listed in there, the Law Department will be the right person to field questions. But just in general about what it is that's before you, that is the basic explanation.
Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Davis, and then Counselor Klingon.
Yeah, Mr. President, should anyone think these are people looking to exploit the city and make, make money, well, I, some of, a lot of these are high school coaches. And if you look through the school budget, you will see the relatively tiny amount they make for so many hours of, of work with the kids at the high school. So they're doing us a favor by doing these coaching jobs, and, and I strongly support these. Thanks.
Councilor Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just, along those lines, if we get into the details, one is for just a summer position, and the other is for a soccer coach.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, so I didn't realize this was a thing, like, there's an exemption. Because I know that a lot of times our hands are tied in terms of, like, hiring somebody for, say, after-school or something, if they work in the daytime. Am I mixing things up? So we should just get rid of this entirely, if we could, you know? There's a lot of people that want to do a second job, and they're...
Are there any councilors who have questions that'll affect their votes? Counselor Burnley.
Through the chair, I just want to confirm with the clerk, through you, that is item 1017 of the same nature as this? Because if it is, then I would recommend that we take all these items up together if there is no objection from my colleagues.
Through the president, yes, it is.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Well, first, I do think, I will, I'll have a question to the clerk, who probably has a better memory, because this has come up before. We generally approve these, correct? Because I do know there are instances where we wouldn't want to approve them, which is why a law exists. So I just want to make sure we're consistent with past practices.
Through the president, they would typically be approved. And the Law Department has also reviewed all of them before they got to your agenda. So the Law Department is supportive of all of these.
Motion to approve.
Is it possible to take these all up together?
It is.
All right. Can we also add 1017? Thank you, Counselor Burnley, for catching that.
So items 710, 711, 712, and 1017.
Those items are approved.
That brings us to item 8.1, an officer's communication from the city solicitor responding to item 24-1290, an order requesting an opinion regarding spot zoning.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Through the chair, thanks for recognizing me. I'd like to wave the readings of 8.1 through 9.25 and ask that they all be approved.
Those items are approved, seeing no discussion. And I move to wave the readings of 927 to 929 and place those items on file.
So that will bring us back then to item 9.26, a public communication from Charles Decheckka, requesting a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of 501 Mystic Valley Parkway from NR to UR.
That item is referred to land use with a copy to the planning board.
The next item then is item 10.5, an order by Councilor Burnley that the Chief of Police update this council on how the police department will ensure members of the public remain separated during counter protests.
Counselor McLaughlin, and Wilson, and Mbah would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, folks around this horseshoe may be surprised to see this item coming from me. I am responding to concerns from multiple groups of residents who have been, quite frankly, alarmed by recent events in Newton. If my colleagues are not aware, there was a protest, and, well, and in fact, two protests in the same area, where one person on one side of the protest ended up charging at another, tackling him. And then the person who he tackled, this is all public record, by the way, Scott Hayes, pulled out a gun and shot the other protester. Scott Hayes is someone who has counter-protested in Somerville multiple times, and this... Scott Hayes is someone who has counter-protested in Somerville multiple times, and this administration, as well as some of my colleagues, may have received emails from constituents really concerned about the levels of harassment and some of the language that he used towards literal high schoolers and children in our community. And given some of the recordings and information that we've received from constituents about how protests have happened in this, in Somerville that have not been, not been met with the level of de-escalation that was necessary and where dangerous situations could have easily came about, I'm following through on my constituents urging that counter protesters are separated, that, and I think that can be done in a number of ways, you know? In my history and practice, that would be organized by organizers who would get marshals and set up trainings ahead of time and, you know, make sure that the community keeps itself safe. As it stands, the city's only real recourse for that is through SPD, so I would love to hear an update from SPD about how they will ensure that protesters are separated, given that there have been documented instances within the recent past of SPD not separating protesters and allowing people to be shoved and pushed even on our own City Hall steps. So, with that, I'd like for this to actually go to Public Health and Public Safety.
Excellent. That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this, and I support everyone in this community feeling safe, and it is very concerning to me, as I said today and several times lately, the feeling of lawlessness that's going on in the city these days and what should be one of the safest communities in America and is, for the most part. But it is, I was surprised, obviously, that this item came forward, and what surprises me isn't the need for people to be supported by police, but how often that support has been neglected for other communities, marginalized communities, that are the victims of some serious violence. And I could go down a laundry list of examples as to times when this council or members of the council have voted against supporting these communities, but I'll just cite a few. You know, this past week, the library, we had a very public discussion about the role of police at the library versus private security. I was one of the few voices to say that maybe we should have a police officer up there, and they're up there weekly because of very serious reported data-driven violence. We've seen the numbers, 60 incidences in a year, that's once a week, that a cop has to go up there to address violence. It was not the consensus of this council to have someone up there permanently to address violence. Instead, we closed the library. Davis Square, we've been talking about that for a while, and at the very last meeting, Council Panetta Newfeld brought up her concerns in the neighborhood, and a counselor read a letter from another constituent, which I personally felt was disparaging towards her concerns about her own well-being and her family's well-being and the well-being of the community. Counselor Klingon has asked for police details at the Mystics due to repeated annual consistent gun violence in a community that is asking for police, and people have voted that down. Gun violence. We can't bring police to a neighborhood that has consistent gun violence and even have gone so far as to say, remove technology that would help us assist the police in stopping gun violence in the community. So, I'm just, I am kind of surprised by this, but I want to support it because if we have the resources, we should absolutely be doing what we can to protect people in this community. I just would like that to be spread equally in the community, and I hope we're reaching a point. Now that we're having these conversations, there've been a number of items today about the role of police for traffic, for issues in the neighborhood, and it feels, I think people are rightfully very confused about what laws apply in the city. And it concerns me that we're going to elevate one group while ignoring the pain and suffering of people who have been dealing with this for many years. So, I would like, hopefully, it sounds like we might be reaching a consensus on this. I'm hoping that we actually are starting to acknowledge that there are some jobs that only the police can do, and maybe that's not a perfect world, but they seem to be the only ones who would be capable of separating people willing to put violence on each other. And I hope this means that we can all work together and talk about progressive policing, community policing, and holding the public and police accountable and making sure that everyone in this community feels safe. I would add, I would prefer this not to go to the Public Health and Safety Committee because I have a great many issues, such as homelessness, such as violence in the community, and now recent items that came up. So, if there's another committee, perhaps equity, that this could be discussed.
Before we get to that, Counselor Klingon would like to sign on. Counselor Panetta Newfeld would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley? Counselor Mbah would like to sign on as well. Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. I, I mean, I think thematically, Public Health and Public Safety is the correct item committee for this to go to. Equity sort of makes sense, I think, but, you know, if my colleague at large is interested in holding it, I suppose it could go there. I just want to reiterate the point that I made when I initially brought this up, which is that police were there already and didn't do any separation of protests. The police were not the solution, at least previously, to this situation that I'm describing and that this item is for, given that they didn't do the thing that, in theory, they're supposed to do. So, I was asking for an up, an update on policy to say, when we see committee, community members physically shoving each other and getting in each other's face, I would hope that there could be some separation. And as I mentioned before, there are plenty of ways to do that, not using police, as is common practice within protests typically. But given that we've had multiple residents and groups of residents ask for this, I would put it forward. And I could go through the list that my colleague from Ward 1 did and dispute facts or argue, but I'll save us the time. Thank you.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the counselor at large for bringing this up. I, too, have heard from many constituents about feeling unsafe at previous protests and counter protests in the city and have been one of the counselors that have advocated to the administration to ensure that there's a police presence. As I have learned in my time as counselor, the directive to the police matters from the administration and from the mayor's office. And so, I think understanding what the directive to the Police Department is around protests is important to understand, as well as setting some guidelines for, for those that are protesting in our community and participating in democracy and in the civic process. I'll leave it there.
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. President, just really quickly, I don't want to, I don't like both sides in things, but this is something where I feel like both sides want this. I've hearing, I'm hearing it from both sides, and I think it just, yes, makes sense.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak to correct the record regarding the Public Health and Public Safety meeting, a statement that was made earlier that I believe to be, at best, misleading. There, no counselor that was a member of the committee read a letter that I recall. There may have been counselors who were speaking as members of the public at the, at the invite of the chair that did so. There has been a 24-hour direct patrol of the police in Davis Square and well over 300 individual patrols, both uniformed and undercover. So, I don't, I don't recall any member of the, of the committee, nor frankly, any counselor speaking as members of the public suggesting that police should not be in Seven Hills Park in that area. So, I don't, not suggesting that the good counselor from Ward 1 intended to make that, but I think it is, comments could be misinterpreted, and given that there's been a lot of misinformation and misinterpretation about that area, I want to make sure that the record is very clear on that. Thank you.
On that, Mr. President?
Counselor McLaughlin?
It was the very last city council meeting when Counselor Scott read a letter from a concerned constituent about the discussion in the Public Health and Safety Committee, and I felt personally, not putting words in anyone's mouth, that, well, actually, it was specifically said about the insensitivity of counselors for bringing up public health concerns. And that's what I'm talking about, is I feel like we are siloing who gets support in this community. And we can't split hairs about who deserves police protection and who doesn't. And that's what I'm discussing right now, is the law applies to everybody, and if it doesn't apply to everyone, then we have real concern. And I think I've repeated a few times these past few weeks that it does feel like, you know, the police are uncertain about what laws this council wants us to enforce and not enforce. The public is uncertain about what laws this council is uncertain. We've had back and forths about what laws should and should not be enforced, and now I'm hearing a request to have a police presence and have them do something, like, that is what is being requested. That's the words of the, of the order, and I support the words of that order, but I just want to make sure that everyone, that it applies to everybody, and I do think we should all consider, like, the many orders placed tonight and in general, and whether we have the capacity to address all of these and make sure that everyone is safe in this community.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I was directly referenced, I will leave each counselor to their own feelings. Apparently, we're discussing them. Just to be clear, I did, in fact, read a public communication that came in from the medical doctor and executive director of a substance use treatment program. That said, I think we're getting pretty far afield on an item that is intended to go to committee, so I'd ask that we bring this to a close.
Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I agree with Counselor McLaughlin on this one. I just, you know, it's gotten very, I think it's very confusing to the, to the Police Department, as well as to people in the community and to myself. I think that, you know, we've, oftentimes, we've heard people call for, like, they don't want any police involvement in anything, and then we're asking them to, to pull people over, you know, a ticket for, for, basically, the breaking the law. And breaking the law is breaking the law, and so, to Counselor McLaughlin's point is that it seems like we want to not enforce certain laws, but we want to enforce other laws, and I just think that we need to get, you know, get our story straight as to what, what laws we want to enforce and how we want to use those resources of the Somerville Police Department. Thank you.
Well, it is my opinion, the council, despite these potential differences and ambiguities in the past, is sending one clear message with this item. Let's refer this, I understand what the chair said, but I think Public Health and Public Safety is always where we've discussed items regarding the Police Department like this, so we'll refer this to Public Health and Public Safety. Counselor Said would like to sign on.
And item 10.6 is an order by Counselor Said that the Director of Parks and Recreation provide this council with the list of youth program offerings, their cap, and their enrollment data in 2023 and 2024.
Counselor Panetta Newfeld would like to sign on. Counselor Said?
So, since the Director of Parks and Recs didn't have this information to provide during the Public Health and Public Safety meeting that we had earlier this week, I'm putting these orders so we can see how many teens are being enrolled in the city's youth program offerings. So, yeah, just a formal request so it doesn't get lost.
Excellent. That item is approved.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor Said that the Director of Mobility...
Counselor Mbah?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, to the good counselor, I think if it's okay with you, they can just forward this to Open Space, because we have this similar item, and with the spreadsheet that was already submitted to us, maybe they can enhance that and have all these parks already send us a spreadsheet, and so, maybe if something is missing, they can just add this to it, we can take it up together.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
We can refer this item to Open Space.
Thank you.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor Said that the Director of Mobility work with the Ward 5 counselor on installing bike parking next to Neighborhood Produce after the Broadway at Boston Avenue intersection work is completed.
Counselor Said?
I brought this up to Director Rossin during one of our monthly meetings. Broadway, a Boston Ave intersection improvement is happening currently, and there was a request from small businesses and constituents in Ball Square, constituents and small businesses in Ball Square to have additional bike parking. So, I'm looking forward to working with the Mobility Department on this.
Counselor Wilson and Counselor Davis would like to sign on to that, and that item is approved.
Item 10.8 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Chief Assessor determine the ownership of open space parcels along McGrath Highway behind Alston Street and Chester Avenue to determine who is responsible for maintenance.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to weigh the readings of 10.8 to 10.16 and refer it to Public Utilities and Public Works, and I'll speak briefly on this. So, there's an interesting area in East Somerville. It's alongside McGrath Highway, behind Alston Street and Chester Ave, intersecting with Cross Street, which is like a no-man's land. It's green space, actually, not very nice green space, but it has trees and grass, and no one wants to claim responsibility for it. So, I had a hu, a big community meeting last week with a number of residents who are frustrated that this area has never been, no one's ever claimed it. We have falling limbs from trees, rodents, trash. The state says it's the city, the city says it's the state. Through working with Mike Connolly, the state rep, and his aide, they discovered some of this is even private property. So, and this has been an issue for many years, so I think it's time to figure out who owns this land and who's responsible for it. So, that's why I've asked the Chief Assessor to come with a map and show us who owns what and figure things out. And then I have a number of other items that just are related to public health and safety issues in the neighborhood. Well, I'll, I'll call them public utility issues, so they're referred to the right committee.
Good old-fashioned mystery. These items are referred to Public Utilities.
Item 10.18 is a public communication from Kristen Anderson and David White submitting comments regarding Elway Brook.
That item and the following two are placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda, Mr. President.
Counselor Said?
I would like to have the order regarding the bike parking sent to Traffic and Parking.
Very well. That is Counselor, that is Order 10.7.
10.7.
We'll refer that to Traffic and Parking.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Scott?
Before we adjourn, just a scheduling note. I know thousands in the community have been eagerly awaiting the return of the Charter Review Committee now that we have a document from the mayor. However, it does overlap, unfortunately, I believe, with the Ward 6 community meeting, fairly high-demand community meeting, and I believe a large number of counselors, including several Ward counselors, are expecting to be there. So, unfortunately, we are going to be canceling that and hopefully rescheduling that for October 29th. Thank you.
Boogie. Are there any late items?
There are no late items, Mr. President.
We are adjourned.